Good evening. All right. So glad that you're here and you've joined us tonight. This is probably one of the most exciting board meetings in the whole year. I mean, this is a pretty exciting night. So I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present on this fine Tuesday. It's November 18th. The Board, the Superintendent and I, we're pleased that you've joined us. We're here to celebrate student achievement. That's going to be the first thing that we do. We're so happy. We have a guest. We're going to hear all about his bio and the work that he's doing, all these accomplished, and that's where we start. We love to honor students and that's what we're all about. We're going to review some information tonight. We're going to make some policy decisions related to the effective operation of Polk County School Board. I would like to call the November 18th regular School Board meeting to order. Now, if we could all stand, I'd like to ask Dr. Craig Miles if you could come forward and lead us in our invocation, and we can please remain standing after for the pledge.
Please let me pray for you. Father, we want to thank you so much-
Much for this day and Lord for your blessings. Lord, we are humbled that you've allowed us to be here tonight safely. And Lord, there's a time of celebration tonight, there's a time of decision. And Father, we ask for your grace and for your wisdom to be present, Lord, with each and every decision that is made. And Father, Lord, we want to thank you for what you are doing in students, in families, Lord. Lord, with our staff, with our faculty. Lord, you have been such a good God to us and you have blessed us richly. Thank you for allowing us to come together in this time of the year to celebrate all that you have done. Lord, would you please guide each and every Board member here tonight as they make decisions, Lord, as they take care of the important business before them? Lord, may they make the decisions that do the most good for the most people and bring you praise, honor and glory. Lord, may your blessings be upon each and every person here. Lord, you know the burdens that each of them bear. Would you let them feel those burdens to be lightened even now by your grace? We ask all of these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Craig Miles, Mr. Henry, if you could step up the microphone there and lead us in our pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the duty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, thank you. You all can be seated at this time, except our guest can remain standing. So we are so thankful that you're here. Would you please so kindly introduce yourself and any guests that you have with us tonight?
My name is Kimani Henry and my family's from Jamaica.
All right, all right. Very good. Thank you. So we are so thankful that y'all have joined us tonight as well. Man, we've got a lot of questions to... Can we ask them questions? Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, very good. Let's hear a little bit about you. Maybe some hobbies or some things that you're interested in outside of school?
I like geography and study flags and name them. And I also like to build Legos.
Yeah, man, so when I read that, geography and Legos, I mean, this is all about spatial type things, spatial cognition, and I mean, pretty impressive. Some big stuff that you've got going on there that you're learning, but that you enjoy thinking about. So how about favorite subjects in school?
Math and reading.
Wow, all right, very good. Math and reading. Would you say you have a favorite subject in general?
Math.
Yeah, out of those two, all right, very good. No, tell us, tell us something about, more about this exploring geography. We mentioned this earlier today, but you've got an interest in cartography?
Yes.
What is that even? Well, I mean, tell us a little bit about that. Like, where did you, like, find out about this?
It was when my dad bought this book about this country, World Country Book, and then I just started reading it and drawing flags.
Wow, that is amazing, that is amazing. You are just extremely brilliant, and maybe tell us something about your school that we should know about?
It's called Winston County of Engineering and we're in a school and-
Yeah.
We focus on STEM a lot.
Indeed, indeed. So, I mean, we just hear all these things and it's clear that you've got this engineering mind, just brilliant, brilliant. I don't know, if you had an opportunity to tell us what your biggest dreams are, like, if you could look in the future, what would that be?
Probably soccer player.
A soccer player. Wow, wow. Now, there was some interesting stuff about your family that struck me as well when I read your bio. Do you want to, do you have any history about your family that you can share with us? I was thinking maybe, actually, your grandfather. There was something in your bio about your grandfather?
He's from Tallahassee and he was the first pediatrician.
Yeah, yeah. So here's the statement that I saw in your bio. It says that your grandfather was actually the first black pediatrician in Tallahassee, and he's actually recognized in the U.S. Congressional Record. Wow. So, Mr. Henry, continue pursuing, pursuing those dreams. It's clear that you can see spaces that we don't see in your mind, so continue pursuing that. We're so thankful that you're here in the boardroom. Just really appreciate the family being here, and you're at an incredible school that's doing great things, and it's clearly because of you, the student. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. So if y'all could, as a family, come stand here in the middle, and we're going to get a picture with you all being in the boardroom tonight. Both Mr. Henry's parents are educators in our system, so we really appreciate your service as well. All right. Board members, the first item on our agenda is to accept our agenda for tonight. Superintendent Hyde, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
There are, Mr. Chair. Item B, number one, oath of office, Kate Wallace, School Board Member, District Three. Excuse me, an item was added. Item C, number one, nomination for Board Chair, description was updated. Item C, number two, nomination of Vice Chair, description was updated. Item D, number one, new administrators, an attachment was updated. Item O, number one, non-instructional personnel items, actions, attachment was added and updated. Item O, number two, administrative and instructional personnel actions, an attachment was added. Item N, number two, purchase of Lake Marion Site for District Development of the Northeast Area for Future School Site, item was moved to action agenda. Item P, as in Paul, number one, IBM Consulting Services Data Warehouse, the attachment was added. Item V, as in Victor, number two, STEM Career Exploration Bus, an attachment was added. And lastly, item W, number one, committee appointments, item was removed.
All right, thank you Superintendent. So at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for the November 18th, 2025 with the noted revisions. Do I have a second?
So moved.
He's right on it. Mr. Keys has made the motion, I need a second. And Mr. Sharpless has seconded. So the motion on the floor is to accept the November 18th, 2025 School Board Agenda as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Superintendent?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to welcome you to the November 18th, 2025 Meeting of the School Board of Polk County, Florida. The Board Chair has called this meeting to order and pursuant to Florida Statute 1001.371, and I, as the Superintendent, will now act as Chair until the organization of the Board has been completed. At this time, we request all cell phones and/or other devices to be turned off. Oh, I apologize. I jumped ahead. At this time, Kate Wallace will receive the oath of office from Pastor Jim Hatch. I don't understand why that's the function of my office.
Anyway. Yeah, the bird could have heard.
Okay. Kate, your mom is holding your father's Bible. It's been his Bible as long as I've known him and you, 30 years, and I would say that that book, the words of that book, probably has more to do with your being here tonight than anything else. So I would ask you to place your right hand on the Bible and raise your other hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Kate Wallace, do solemnly swear-
I, Kate Wallace, do solemnly swear-
That I will support, protect and defend-
That I will support, protect and defend-
The Constitution and government of the United States-
The Constitution and government of the United States-
And of the state of Florida-
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution-
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties-
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties-
Of School Board Member of Polk County Schools-
Of School Board Member of Polk County Public Schools.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Some pictures.
One last one. My two former teachers.
Oh.
Oh, and administrators, if y'all want to go into. So I'm sorry. Bye. Okay. Do I push the one?
All right. So glad that you're here. Ms. Wallace, you were recognized.
Help me with my button operation, okay. Good evening. I do have some prepared remarks. I thought all of you, give me some grace, I'm from a family of criers, and so when the annual holiday Publix commercial comes on or anything like that, I'm done. This is, this is a time to give thanks to so many people and experiences and this system and this community, so I'm going to do my best to hold it together, and I promise that that won't compromise my commitment to this job or my professionalism, but I'm just, phew, this is a huge honor, so I'm really thrilled to be here. And if you'll indulge me for just a few minutes, I'd like to just provide some prepared remarks. So I first want to give thanks to the many people who've helped me get to this moment, and following that, I'd like to share a little bit about my background and why I'm excited to serve my fellow Polk Countians on this Board and the ways I hope to make a positive impact during our time together. First, I give thanks to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for without Him, none of this would be possible. I'm deeply grateful to Governor Ron DeSantis and his team for entrusting me with this responsibility. To Jenna Nolte, who's here this evening, and the entire Nolte family. Thank you for being here. I offer my heartfelt condolences and hope to honor your father Rick's legacy through my service. Thank you. I also want to thank all of the district's staff, including Superintendent Hyde and the whole team, who worked tirelessly on very short notice to get me onboarded. That's no short order, all the paperwork and all the legal things you have to do. So again, thank you for working with me and helping me make it to this point. To the many family members, friends, former teachers, classmates, colleagues, mentors, peers I've grown up with and all work for the district that are here tonight, anybody watching online, thank you so much. Your support means the world. My journey to this moment, of course, starts with my family. I come from a family of educators and School Board members. Many of you from Bartow may not know that. My great-grandfather was a School Board Member in Pitt County, North Carolina, that's home to East Carolina University, and right now, they have a football player who graduated from Bartow High School and played basketball for my brother, so we're very proud of him. He's on a full scholarship, getting his education first and foremost. My great-grandfather's daughter, my paternal grandmother, Marvel Stokes Wallace, she's a retired Duval County Public School English teacher of 30-plus years. She is 95 years young, watching from her home in Jacksonville. Grandmama, I love you, thank you. Her first son is my father, we'll get to his contributions in a minute. Her second son, Stokes, married a teacher, my Aunt Donna Wallace, who taught in Florida public schools, primarily Orange, a little bit in Pinellas. She taught for 36 years. She tried to retire, but she missed it too much, and now she's back in the classroom in Orlando full-time with Kelly Services, serving her grandchildren and their peers in her Orange County community. Thank you Aunt Donna for your service. My grandmother's third child, and my dad's little sister, is another name many longtime locals or career PCPS employees from the 80s and 90s might recognize, Kit Wallace Kramer. She's a former head of Public Relations for Polk County Public Schools, working here from 1983 to 1991, and after taking a new opportunity at Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Schools, she was eventually elected to their School Board in 2004. But wait, there's more. There are hundreds of registered nurses in Polk County. There are hundreds of registered nurses in Polk County and surrounding areas who can thank my mother. She told me, she was the one who told me not to cry. Um, ooh, okay, got it. There are hundreds of registered nurses in Polk County and surrounding areas who can thank my mother, Jenny Wallace, for their strong foundational nursing skills as she taught them in Nursing One at then Polk Community College in the 1990s. Side note, I remember watching her grade their labs while she was watching me at swim practice or volunteering at my school, so thank you, Mom. Last but not least, my older brother, Coach Trip Wallace. He's been a teacher and a coach with Bartow High and Bartow Middle for the last 15 years. He's a big reason why Bartow, here's a fun fact, had two of its former players and students sharing an NBA court on national television earlier this month. But more importantly, more importantly, he's helped dozens of young boys grow up to be strong men and leaders in their own communities. I love you. As for my dad, and with the support of my mom- As for my dad, and with the support of my mom, I want everyone to know the kind of example they've set before I was born, all my life, and to this day. My parents moved to Barto in nineteen eighty-one. They're from Jacksonville, and a friend of theirs invited them to move here, and they moved here to set out on a new career path. I grew up watching my parents lead the PTO, the Barto Booster Club, Barto High Booster Club. They organized and donated toward efforts to bring the IB school to Barto. And I was only seven years old when they were doing that, and I would end up being their only child to graduate from that program. They supported youth and high school athletics, youth ministries. Another one that I hope to celebrate before this board next year is that they have been feeding the Barto softball and basketball teams for thirty consecutive years to date. And I might add, they have twelve state titles to their credit and counting. If you want to Google Jenny Wallace or Hal Wallace in the Ledger, you'll find this story. But as Rick Brown reported in the Ledger in twenty-eleven about my mom and all of that winning, it must be the cooking. Can attest to that. So, I come from a family who loves Barto and Polk County Public Schools. All three of my siblings and I are proud PCPS graduates. And Dr. Allen, isn't it great to be from the home of champions? There were several turning points, as I look back, there were several turning points in my life that brought me to this moment in terms of why I'm here, why I wanted this role, and what formed and shaped my paradigm about why this was important to me and why this is my calling. The first one is in nineteen ninety-two. And again, all of you who are from here, or if you've studied the history of our school board, you know that there was a federal civil rights lawsuit. And the judge ordered that our whole district rezone. And I, like many other thirty, forty-somethings, may remember that you might have been impacted if you were at an neighborhood public school in Polk County at the time. And I was attending Floral Avenue, and I was rezoned to Given Street Elementary on the east side of Barto. And my parents and our community were supportive of that effort, even though it caused some disruption. And as a seven-year-old, when I set foot on campus, I noticed a difference in that campus, and not in a good way. It didn't have the same resources. The library was a fraction of the size of the one at Floral Avenue. It didn't have a computer lab. It didn't, I knew at seven that it was a little different than the school I had just come from. And at that age, I tender, I internalized the fact that address does have a role in playing, or informing access. And I carried that with me. And I had a number of wonderful teachers, administrators, but there's two here from that tonight. Ms. Linda Sue Monroe, who was an assistant, or a kindergarten teacher during that time, eventually AP. And then Mrs. Anne Whitehead, who was my fifth-grade teacher, God bless her. But Mrs. Whitehead and Ms. Monroe, thank you for your service and thank you for giving me so many memories, wonderful memories, and to prepare me for the rigors of middle school. As I made my way into high school, I took on, speaking of rigors, the rigors of IB and fulfilled what was then my lifelong childhood dream of serving as Miss Barto High School. And I, just if you are familiar with that, it's an ambassador role. It was not a beauty pageant, I can guarantee you. But I, when I was a little girl, I saw some older young ladies hold that title, and that was something I aspired for and prepared for. So when I got that opportunity to serve and represent my school, I still consider it one of my proudest achievements. Another turning point in my life was the drama of the two thousand presidential election. And soon after nine eleven, and the aftermath, which changed all of our lives forever, I was in high school. By the way, the teacher I was with that fateful morning, and so, who so ably guided me and my classmates through that initial shock of the footage. The burning towers is here tonight, Senora Martha Larip. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And she also helped me become conversational in Spanish, and I still use those skills to this day. So, thank you, Senora. Muchas gracias. The national response and conversations around how to keep our country safe fascinated me. I even did my IB extended essay on the history of American free speech during times of war. And being a Barto kid, I had many prominent local examples to look to when entering the world of politics. Former Secretary of State Catherine Harris and former Congressman Adam Putnam, right here from Barto, Barto High School graduates in our backyard. An internship with Congressman Putnam led to work in Washington and eventually to the Foundation of Excellence, Foundation for Excellence in Education, where I saw how critical policies and especially great teachers led by strong principles can change lives. Today, we're in a time of incredible change. I come from the cable industry where longtime legacy providers are retooling themselves as new competition enters the market. Think about it. Less than twenty years ago, most people only had one option for connecting to the internet, one to two options for watching TV, and not many choices for mobile phone services. Now, the options and combinations are endless. Customers are driving the design of products and services. You can bundle or unbundle anything. And one customer at one address can access endless options. Does that sound familiar? That's why I'm here. I will be a school board member for all students, all parents, all educators, and all schools. Traditional charter, private, home, virtual, everywhere and between. My door and my mind will always be open. I love Polk County because Polk County has loved me. I want to give back and leave our schools stronger than I found them, always putting students first, serving with humility, and learning from each of you. Superintendent Hyde, fellow board members, staff, thank you for welcoming me. I'm ready to get to work. God bless you all. God bless Polk County Public Schools, the great state of Florida, and the United States of America. Thank you.
Ms. Wallace, welcome aboard. Superintendent, I'm going to now pass it back to you.
And we are at the reorganization portion, correct? Okay, just want to make sure. I apologize. I'm going to start again, so good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to welcome you to the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the School Board of Polk County, Florida. The board chair has called this meeting to order in pursuant to Florida Statute one zero zero one point three seven one. And I, as superintendent, will now act as chair until the organization of the board has been completed. At this time, we request all cell phones and/or other devices to be turned off or put in silent mode. Our next order of business is to elect a board chair. I will use the following procedure. In a moment, I'll open the floor to nominations. Anyone can make a nomination, including self-nominations. Nominations are made by the standard speaking order established through our electronic system. Nominations do not require a second. Now, for the sake of this evening being Ms. Wallace's first evening, does she know? Ms. Wallace, are you familiar with how to signal that you want to speak?
I am. Is there an electronic voting or do you?
You're not voting. You're going to indicate that you're interested in joining the speakers list, and that's how we'll call you for nominations. I just want to make sure that you're familiar. Ms. Vega, would you please go and stand next to Ms. Wallace, just in case there's an issue with her clicking? Again, anyone can make a nomination, including self-nominations. Nominations are made by the standard speaking order established through our electronic system. Nominations do not require a second. Election, elections of officers shall be by roll-call majority vote of members physically present, taken by the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall ask for a voice roll-call vote in which each member has the opportunity to vote for one of the individual nominees. The member receiving a majority of the votes cast is elected. Where no such majority exists, on the first vote, a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of votes. If there's a tie, or no one receives a majority of votes cast, a third vote must be taken. Additional votes will be taken as necessary to elect the final or one candidate. At this time, I will now accept nominations for chairman. Nominations, again, do not require a second. I'll allow time for nominations. You're supposed to be indicating by signing up to speak. I see two names. I just want to make sure I gave everybody enough time. Ms. Wyatt.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Miller.
Dr. Allen.
I would like to nominate Mr. Sharpless.
I will now entertain a motion that nominations be closed. I have a motion. I have a second. At this time, we will, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will now conduct a roll-call vote by district. I will call each board, each member by district, so please indicate the nominee you support by name. District one.
Justin Sharpless.
District two.
Justin Sharpless.
District three.
Justin Sharpless.
District four.
Lisa Miller.
District five. Ma'am. Mr. Green.
I would like to ask Mr. Sharpless a question. Am I able to do that?
You can ask, yes.
Okay, Mr. Sharpless, I know that you are treasurer for the Florida School Board Association. So my question to you, do you feel that you'll be able to do both the treasurer of the Florida School Board Association and the chair of the school district?
Yes, the Florida School Board Association dates and everything are way in advance. We know all those, and there's only a few commitments per, like a virtual meeting in a month, monthly virtual meeting, which I could easily do that, as well as many of the times that I'm representing the Florida School Board Association will be as a school board member. So, I think it would be very, very doable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my vote would be for Justin Sharpless.
And district seven.
I think this board is under, well, lots of great leadership here, and obviously, Mr. Sharpless, I think you'll do a great job as our next chair.
Thank you.
There is a majority at this time, so we'll move on. I'll now accept nominations for vice chair. Mr. Sharpless.
I nominate Travis Keys.
Ms. Wyatt.
I nominate Lisa Miller.
Dr. Allen.
My nominee has been mentioned already.
So the two nominees right now are Travis Keys and Lisa Miller. I'll now entertain a motion that the nominations be closed. I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll now conduct a roll-call vote by district. I'll call each member by district, so please indicate the nominee you support by name. District one.
Travis Keys.
District two.
I humbly accept the nomination.
I don't believe that constant.
Yes. Travis Keys. Travis Keys.
Thank you. District three.
Travis Keys.
District four.
Travis Keys, because it sounds like my nominee did not humbly accept their nomination. They want to keep their seat.
District five. District six.
Travis Keys.
District seven.
I'm voting for Travis Keys. I do not want to give up my quick exit. Thank you.
There are a lot of reasons. We have a majority. So congratulations. At this time, I'll conclude here in a moment, but we have elected as chair, Mr. Justin Sharpless, and as vice chair, Mr. Travis Keys. The next item is the designation of time, date, and place of the school board meetings. I recommend that the board hold meetings on the fourth Tuesday of each month at five PM, with these meetings to be held in the school board auditorium at the administrative offices here in Barto, Florida. I'll now entertain a motion to that effect. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? I'll entertain a vote, please. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The next item is the approval of resolution for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six oh seven, authorizing the banks of Polk County, Florida, as depositories of school funds to honor and cash warrants drawn against said funds when signed by the board chair and secretary of the board. I'll now entertain a motion. I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? No discussion at this time, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? And the vote passes. The next item on today's reorganization agenda is my recommendation that proceedings of the school board meetings be held in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, revised in the rules of the Administrative Procedures Act. I'll now entertain a motion. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Vote passes. That completes the reorganization of our board. I'll now turn the meeting over to our new chair, Mr. Justin Sharpless.
Thank you, Superintendent. The next item on our agenda is new administrators. Superintendent Hyde, would you lead us through our next item?
Yes, sir, it'd be my pleasure. The first administrator we have to recognize is Mr. Josh Bieber, teacher at Southwest Elementary School, being promoted to assistant principal at Southwest Elementary.
Want to take a moment to express my gratitude to Superintendent Hyde, Ms. Collins, Ms. Knave, Ms. Sloan, for entrusting me with this opportunity to serve as assistant principal at Southwest Elementary. This is not just a role, it's a responsibility to our students, staff, and community, and I am honored to step into it. I'm looking forward to working alongside you and our dedicated team to continue building an environment where excellence, equity, and opportunity are at the forefront. Thank you again for this incredible opportunity. I'm eager to serve and contribute to the success of our school community.
Congratulations. If you'll please join us up front for a photo. Are you joined by any family or colleagues or? It's not just you. Next, we have Erin Bay, administrative assistant from Haynes City High School, being promoted to acting assistant principal at Haynes City High School. Congratulations.
Just want to take this opportunity to give some gratitude to Mr. Tarver and administration team over at Haynes City High School. He came in over at Haynes City, I believe it was about two, two, two or three years ago, it's a blur. But he took a chance on me, pulled me out of the classroom, and really built me up to the leader that I am today. And I really appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Hyde, for the opportunity to lead one of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Please feel free to join him. Congratulations again. I'll pause for a moment to let the room clear. And next, we have Kristy Floyd, reading coach at Barto High School, being promoted to acting assistant principal at Kathleen High School.
Hello, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. God had a place for me at Kathleen. And I want to give a thanks to Ms. Aitkins for recommending me and Mr. Jones for allowing me to grow and prosper at Kathleen High School.
Congratulations. Way to go, Rick. And I know this was a possibility, this person would not be with Ms. Frazier if this evening. Okay, Carissa Frazier, assistant principal at Wakulla High School, new appointment head to head of program at Kathleen High School. We'll recognize her at a future meeting. John Gully, assistant principal at Kathleen High School, being promoted to head of program at CFAA. at CFAA.
All right. Good evening, board chair, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Hyde. I'm truly honored to be recognized as the head of program for the Central Florida Aerospace Academy at Kathleen High School. This recognition means a great deal to me, and I'm grateful for the trust and confidence you've placed in our program and me. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to Ms. Collins, Mr. Bruno, Ms. Clark, and Mr. Darford Jones for their leadership guidance and unwavering support. Each of them has played an essential role in strengthening CFA and ensuring our students have access to opportunities that prepare them for the success in aviation, aerospace, and beyond. Once again, I want to thank everybody for this incredible honor.
Congratulations. Next, we have Colin Hanson, administrative assistant at Mulberry Middle School, being promoted to acting assistant principal at Sleepy Hill Middle.
I want to express my gratitude to Superintendent Hyde, chief of schools, Tracy Collins, regional superintendent Cynthia Cangelos, and the school board members for tonight's recognition. It's truly an honor to serve as acting assistant principal of Sleepy Hill Middle School and to support our Jaguars, our Jaguar students, staff, and community. Thank you for your trust and continued commitment to excellence in education. I want to thank the incredible leaders that I've been able to learn from. I'm committed to honoring their legacy by continuing the work they started and striving for excellence in everything that I do. And a special thank you to my principal, Danae Clark, for her guidance, mentorship, and support as I begin my administrative journey. Your leadership and collaboration make a tremendous difference in the lives of our students every day. I would not be standing here tonight without the unwavering support and encouragement of my family, even on nights like tonight when my wife has her band concert, my daughter's at Girl Scouts, and my son is in his T-ball playoff game. Their understanding and sacrifices make it possible for me to give my best every day. As Ken Blanchard said, servant leadership is all about making the goals clear and then rolling up your sleeves and doing whatever it takes to help people win. I am proud to lead with that mindset and work alongside a team dedicated to putting students first.
Congratulations, sir. Come on, Danae, he has a softball game to get to. Volleyball, sorry. Those heels. Next, we have Tamisa Moore, TRST at Stevens Elementary School, being promoted to acting assistant principal at Sokrom Elementary.
Good evening, Superintendent, school board members. It is truly an honor to stand before you today as the new assistant principal of Sokrom Elementary. I am deeply grateful and humbled for the trust that you have placed in me, and I am excited to serve our students, our families, and staff with integrity, passion, and a commitment to excellence. I want to sincerely thank the Polk County School Board and the district leadership for this incredible opportunity. Thank you for the many leaders who have guided me throughout my career. Your dedication has truly inspired me. A special thank you to Ms. Hardy for teaching me what it truly means to be an instructional leader. Your mentorship and belief in my potential have made a profound impact on my educational journey. I would also like to acknowledge and thank my family for the reason I am able to do this work. To my husband, Steven, thank you for your unwavering support, your patience, and belief in me. To my son, Lane, I hope I make you proud, and I hope you always see the importance and the power of hard work and the service to others. And to my parents, thank you for always pushing me to pursue my dreams and reminding me that I am capable of achieving them. I look forward to working alongside our school community to ensure that every student feels valued, supported, and challenged. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm truly honored, humbled, and blessed. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have Mr. Wayne Rodolphich, formerly superintendent Lake Wells Charter School, new appointment to assistant director at Travis Technical Center.
Just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you to Mr. Hyde. I've had an incredible experience since I started working here in the district. At Travis, we're doing some really cool and fun things for students, and it's just super exciting to be part of a school system, one of the fastest-growing systems in the country, and I'm so eager for the challenge that's ahead of us. Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir. Next, we have James Slaughter, administrative assistant at Lakeland Highlands Middle School, being promoted to acting assistant principal at Lakeland Highlands Middle.
Good evening. First, I want to thank my family, my, my three sons, who I strive to make proud every day, my wife, who pushes me to be the better version of myself, my colleagues, the assistant principals, principals, and all the teachers that I've worked with over the years that have kind of molded me into the person that I am. I'm especially thankful for the wonderful Ms. Knave, who, I don't know why, saw something that, that deserved a promotion, and I appreciate you. Ms. Leslie Roberts as well, my team and my school family, who I couldn't be more thankful for to work with such a great group of people. And then lastly and not least, Christ, who, above all and first, was always a servant, and I try to reflect to be that every day. So thank you.
Thank you. Not with us this evening is Brittany Smith, administrative assistant at Ridge Community High School. Acting head of program at Tenner Rock High School is her promotion, and we will invite her back at another date because she's unable to be with us this evening. And lastly, we have David Ulch, assistant principal, Winter Haven High School, being promoted to acting head of program at Summerlin Academy. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent Hyde, board members, thank you for having me this evening. I am very grateful to be up here today to speak to all of you, and obviously you guys introducing me to everyone. It's, it's a great honor to be able to take this role. I think, I'm very thankful for the opportunity to be able to continue the customs and traditions of Summerlin Academy, on top of instilling the importance of building leadership skills and civic duty within our cadets. And having been there for a month now, it's, it's been great to see that transition from Winter Haven High School into Summerlin and seeing the, the progress our, our cadets have already made, and I look forward to continuing that in their pursuit of any career that they, they look into, especially into the military. So I look forward to continuing that as we go forward. Again, thank you for this great opportunity. I look forward to go forward. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Sharpless to step down for this evening's recognition, or at least a portion of it. In addition, I'd like to ask Mr. Keys to please step down for tonight's recognitions and invite our representative from the Florida School Boards Association to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent and board members. Welcome. Ms. Wallace, looking forward to working with you. I'm here today on behalf of the Florida School Boards Association, where we are proud to recognize Travis Keys. Where did he go? Over here. From, as the newest member of the class of emerging leaders. He is the nineteenth member of his election class out of sixty-five members to earn his emerging leader pin. And what that means is that he had to complete forty-eight hours of professional development within one year of elections. So these hours are earned through participation in the new school board member training parts one and two, and attendance at our forums, the school finance forum, policy governance forum, and bargaining 101. He also attended our Washington DC lobbying trip, I should say. By earning this distinction, I think it's important to, to recognize that he has demonstrated his commitment to the Polk County School District to professionalism, and we expect great continued contribution. So thank you and good luck. Congratulations.
They'll take a photo. Mr. Keys will return. Mr. Sharpless, if you'll stay still, stay for recognition.
Oh, wait, there's more. Isn't that what you said, Kate? I'm also here today to recognize with a distinguished recognition the, the honor of certified support professional. We call it our CSP program. This distinguished honor is awarded to school board support professionals, support personnel professionals, who demonstrate exceptional commitment to professional development and service to public education. The certified support professional program is designed to elevate and acknowledge the vital role that supports staff play in the daily operations and long-term success of Florida's public schools, and very specifically the school board members themselves. By completing the program's training and development requirements, both Yvette Vega and Linda Baldick have shown continued dedication and continuous improvement in their roles serving their school board members. These support professionals are often the unsung heroes of the school system, and we want to make sure that you recognize that they have proactively invested in their own professional development. This is a very new certification program that we have. It was just recently designed by some of their peers, and Yvette and Linda are numbers thirty-seven and thirty-eight from across the state of Florida of eighty-six peers across the state. So we wanted to recognize them, thank them for the work that they do on behalf of the school board members, and say, thank you, thank you, thank you for your professionalism.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to invite Jeanette Crowley, Director of Strategic Planning and Partnerships, to please come forward for the recognition of the focused-on-excellence winners. So they'll, I apologize, the script was, had an error. Ms. Crowley's here to recognize Public's charities for their donations for the school, for our school board, school pantries.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Chair, school board member, Superintendent Hyde. Public's charities endeavors to support nonprofit organizations that assist people in need within our communities so that they have the opportunity to lead successful lives. Public's charities is dedicated to preserving the dignity and value of the human spirit in the face of adversity, determined to offer people hope and a choice for the future, and devoted to the highest standards of community involvement and demonstrated by their founder, George W. Jenkins. This past summer, the strategic partnerships team worked with Tracy Collins and the regionals, Dr. Shannon Gillespie from Student Services, and the community liaisons to compile a list of school sites that indicated they had a school food pantry on site. Public's charities conducted site visits before the school year to see the location of the food pantry, meet the principal and school staff, and learn more about the work being done along with the needs and the challenges of each site. I'm thrilled to share that Public's charities has donated $100,000 to Polk County Public Schools for the school food pantry program. The funding will help supplement twenty existing school food pantries for the 25-26 school year. I had the pleasure of collaborating with John Doran, executive director for Public's charities and Lakeland native, to bring the school food pantry program to fruition. During Mr. Doran's twenty-three years as a public's associate, he has served in the various roles throughout the company and worked closely with many nonprofits in central Florida. We are grateful for Public's charities and Mr. Doran's support and are excited about the impact the school food pantry program is going to have for our students and families. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Doran to the podium to say a few remarks.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Superintendent Hyde and school board members really appreciate the opportunity to be here. As Jeanette mentioned, I'm a Lakeland native. I'm actually a, a son of the Polk County school system. I attended Dixieland Elementary, Southwest Middle School, and graduated as a dreadnought from Lakeland High School. So it's my great pleasure to be able to represent Public's charities and to provide this $100,000 donation to Polk County Public Schools to support the, the food pantries, as Jeanette mentioned. So during the summer, I, I did spend a lot of time traveling Polk County. I think it was somewhere in the range of about a thousand miles that I covered, crisscrossing the, the county back and forth. But I, I really appreciate the, at the time that was given to me by, by all the folks at the schools, and I'm so proud to have some of them here tonight. They were, they allowed us to walk the grounds, to see the pantries, to talk about the issues that they're actually working through and the, the different nuances that each school is really working through to, to address the needs, not only for their students, but for their staff and for their neighborhoods that surround them. So I'm, I'm really glad that we're able to, to, to do all of this. We have so many good people that are working very long hours. They're putting in the extra time, and they're putting in the extra effort to support their communities, and we're really honored to be walking alongside them and helping out with this. So funding from Public's charities is intended to augment the existing partnerships and donations that the schools have established. We want to work with others in the communities and school leadership to improve food variety, food quality, and food quantity in each one of these pantries. And this is a program that we look forward to evolving in the future. We're going to work very closely with Polk County Public Schools to understand all the different challenges that the schools are facing and where the needs are actually greater. So thank you again for this recognition and the opportunity to be here tonight to share this with you. And I do have a giant check that we can.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, before we do the photo, I do want to acknowledge, because we do have some of our schools here, so I would like, I'm going to acknowledge all the schools, and then I'd like to do a group photo. So with us, the following schools are classified as a community-supported site and will receive $1,000. We have Crystal Lake Middle, Davenport School of the Arts, George Jenkins Senior High, Lake Region Senior High, Lakeland Senior High, Loughman Oaks Elementary, Palmetto Elementary, Roosevelt Academy, Sleepy Hill Elementary, Southwest Middle, and Spook Hill Elementary. The fol, the following schools are classified as a programmatically-supported site and will receive $500. And this is just an initial distribution. The schools are also allowed to, to increase that over time as well as the need increases. We have Barto Senior High, Crystal Lake Elementary, Dennison Middle, Fort Meade Middle Senior, Lake Marion Creek Middle, Lewisanna Woodbury Elementary, McLaughlin Academy of Excellence, Ridge Community Senior High, and Westwood Middle. So can we give a round of applause to all these schools participating? And thank you for the generous support of Public's charities. Thank you, Mr. Doran. All right. All right.
Get on your tippy toes, Travis.
Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Mr. Chair, that concludes special recognitions.
Thank you, Superintendent. The next item of business is public comment on agenda items. Before we begin, I would like to welcome the public and go over public comment process and opportunities for this evening. We will, we have actually the opportunity for three different spots for public comment. The first will be this evening's agenda items to be voted on. The second normally is our, our public hearing. We don't have a public hearing today. And lastly, at the end of the meeting, we'll have an additional opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. To register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you will hear a beep when your time is concluded. All comments should be directed to myself as the board chair. As a reminder, public comments are an opportunity for us, for, they ask collectively to hear your thoughts and comments. This is not a question-and-answer session, and comments are not to be directed at individual board members. However, if you are seeking additional information, I encourage you to contact any of us or the superintendent's office outside of board meetings, and we would be happy to have a deeper conversation with you. We have no one signed up for comments on agenda items. So, next, we will go to our consent. No, next, we'll go to our approval of minutes. Board members, we now need to approve two sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the October 28, 2025 work session meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Mr. Keys made the motion. Dr. Allen seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Next, our next set of minutes is from the October 28, 2025 school board meeting. Do I hear a motion for approval? Board Member Wyatt made the motion to approve. Board Member Fields seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it unanimously, and it is passed. The next item is approval of today's consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the November 18, 2025 consent agenda as printed. Do I have a motion? Board Member Allen made the motion. Do I hear a second? Board Member Wyatt seconded, I believe. Okay. I would like, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would like to call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Scrolling down here. Next up, we have our action agenda item. The first, the only item on our action agenda is W1, Purchase of the Lake Marion Site for District Development in the Northeast Area for Future School. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Board Member Wyatt. Do I have a second? Seconded by Board Member Fields. Is there any discussion? Board Member Keys, you're recognized.
So, this was brought up before. I'm going to, right now, stand out in opposition of this. I know this discussion was originally created before I came on the board, but I think the land grab at a time right now is ill-timed. I also think that the support that's there, there is no infrastructure, there is no plan, timeline for infrastructure to be there, and there are parcels within that purchase agreement that I think are not needed for the entirety of the site. So, I can't in good conscience support this initiative at this time.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Board Member, sorry, Board Chair, or, sorry, Board Member Allen.
That's all right. Thank you, Chair. I will not be supporting this as well this evening. I was, you know, alarmed that it was on a consent agenda with an item that's such a heavy price at this point. I think there's more that should be communicated to us in regards to what the services are as it relates to that piece of property. Secondly, this is way close to our P3 high school project that we are currently under construction, and I have not heard an update as it relates to that P3 project. I would appreciate Superintendent, some direction on where we're going with that P3. I think this has been slated parenthetical-wise as a high school, and I'm trying to understand and just wrap my head around the property, because even in the documents themselves, it's alluded to as a high school property. So, I have a little confusion on it. I just think it would be wise to get more information on this particular item. So, I will not be voting in favor of this item tonight.
All right. So, I'm the one who pulled this from the consent agenda and asked for it to be put on the action agenda, because I wanted to hear my colleagues' comments on it. This item is, let me see here, is a, was a significant purchase, and that's something I would like, again, that's why I wanted to have a discussion on. I sent some questions I had to Superintendent Hyde about this. I, I'm concerned right now with everything that's coming from the Schools of Hope Initiative. I, I could see the legislature looking at unused properties next, and I'm just concerned about land banking right now when we have additional properties around the district that aren't being used. And so, I just, you know, I genuinely am just concerned. I know we had a work agenda, a work agenda item, work session agenda item on this, but for me, I'm just hesitant. I'm hesitant. And so, for that, I, I plan on, or I will be voting in opposition. I feel like we can get some more information, come back. I think it would be a wise decision. Next up, Board Member Fields.
I have a question for Superintendent Hyde. Haven't we been discussing this property for a minute now, Superintendent Hyde?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that when we last had a conversation about it, I had some concerns, and I know that those concerns were addressed by you and Mr. Fix, I believe. Yes, sir. So, can you provide your comments, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, in the presentation that was provided to the board, it was never referenced for a high school, and if it was, it was whether or not a high school could fit on that property, not that it was being used for a high school. Actually, the three recommendations that we made and we've discussed during the workshops was the possibility for a facilities location, for a bus depot, and/or other facilities, maintenance areas, and warehousing. We also looked at it for potential for an elementary site or even a K-8 site, given its proximity. I think Mr. Sharpless's points are valid as far as a concern for what the legislature may do potentially in the future, but I'm just going to urge some caution as we look at things like this, because land banking gives the school district the best possible opportunity to secure land now at more affordable pricing. Land is becoming more and more difficult, especially buildable land that provides the acreage that we need in order to be able to satisfy our growth. And while we do own 12 properties here in Polk County, those are not areas with high growth. And so, just so the board understands, it's, it's, it's a very mixed bag where ultimately, we're going to have to make some tougher decisions than in the future, because if we forfeit land banking as an option, especially in high-growth areas, your only remaining available option is going to be rezoning schools and having students travel long distances to get to the next closest school. So, or, we're going to pay much more in the future based off the price point of that land. So, those are some of the concerns that the board needs to be cognizant of. I will be happy to bring this back. If it does not pass this evening, the board has indicated you have more questions. I'll be happy to have you submit those to my office, and then we will put together another workshop presentation on this topic.
Mrs. Fields, are you concluded?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Miller.
Thank you. I also had questions about this that were answered, and I just have a question about procedure, and maybe we need to look at this. This would have been a great topic for work session. To pull something off an agenda because you wanted to hear what your board members had to say, I want us to make sure that we're in the sunshine. Your board members didn't mention that in the work session, and so, it would have been a great time to talk about, talk about this. In the work session, we'd have a longer time to bring it back. I am up to whatever the majority of the board feels. I thought this had been reviewed, but if there's still questions and the superintendent needs to bring it back, then I'm, I'm willing to wait for that vote if you think this isn't going to affect the actual deal. But, that's why the work sessions are so important. You can pull things at last minute and have comment at last minute, not to, obviously not to vote on them during the board meeting, but to infer questions at the time it was polled. It would, it would have been, I think it would have been best use of our time to discuss them there. But, I do appreciate you bringing these matters up at this time. Thank you.
Next up, we have Board Member Allen.
All right. So, yeah, again, I think it's fruitful that we have this conversation at this time. Superintendent, I would like to hear on record that, because in the presentation, it's noted as high school. And I think that's where I'm struggling, because we do have the P3 Point Ciana Project that we have yet to hear an update on. The last question I had stating, as it relates to the dates, it had been pushed off a year. So, I just want to make sure that this property is not being purchased to supplement the property for the Point Ciana Project. That's what I just want to affirm.
Yeah, that I can answer without Mr. Pitts. The answer is no. You can come to the microphone, because, Mr. Fix, please join. And Josh, thank you. This attachment here, there was a separate attachment that was, that was covered in a previous presentation that showed the three options that I just shared with you, because we determined this was not going to be a high school site, given its proximity and where our, and basically based off of our needs. But, that's the point behind land banking as well, which is we don't necessarily always have the best ability to project what areas are going to grow and which ones are not. And this was initially provided to us as potentially an alternative site for the high school instead of the P3 proposal that we're currently following. And so, I think that's where some of the conversation, maybe even the slides, because I'm looking through them now. And I think that's where our analysis came through, that we were showing why we were looking at the site and whether or not it would fit at the time. But, again, the three recommendations right now is a facilities warehouse area, an elementary school, and/or a K-8. K-8 would make more sense, but Mr. Fix and Mr. Macklemore, I'd let you do that. But, Mr. Pitts, I'd like you to address Dr. Allen's question about the status of the high school, the new high school.
I appreciate that, and I think, please put it in the context of the property that should have been obtained or should be obtained for the Point Ciana Project. So, I'm trying to make sure that, because my understanding, we, that property's not secured yet. So, I just want that to be on the record.
So, we signed an interim agreement with Fortress Secured back in April, and we're moving through a comprehensive agreement with Fortress Secured. There are several environmental tests that are undergoing. The last one would be in January, and we'll be moving to get that assignment of land here very quickly. We're still on schedule, the schedule that was presented to you previously. So, we're still on schedule with, as soon as we get that assignment of land, get the comprehensive agreement signed, we're looking to break around in the spring.
So, for example, as Mr. Pitts pointed out, Dr. Allen, and for the rest of the board, there are, thankfully now, there are actually two windows per year versus one. That law changed, I believe, just within the last two years, where a school district, when we procure land, we have to go out and actually do an assessment to determine if there's any endangered species on the location that have to be remediated, or potentially it could ultimately result in us not being able to use a parcel. So, that process has, is very timeline-specific and calendarized by the state. And so, we just completed the skink study, and we were very fortunate to not have a population of skinks that would have to be relocated or remediated, or again, would potentially make the land unusable for us because of the population density. So, that has to occur along with several other species of birds, gopher tortoises, burrowing owls, there's, there's any number of those. But, it used to be, again, you were limited to one specific timeframe per year. Now, they allow us to do it twice, two times per year. So, that's where we are in the process, but I'll have Mr. Pitts finalize that and put together the complete timeline for you. But, we are on track to finalize that property for procurement, because it would not make sense for us to rush that process to ultimately find out that there's an issue there where the cost of remediation to relocate those animals or have to do a workaround to avoid certain portions of the land would essentially cost us significantly more money. So, that's where we are right now. And Mr. Macklemore, Mr. Fix, could you address the high school site or the three sites or three uses that we proposed, or?
As the superintendent's already alluded to, this process has been going on for quite some time. And when we first started down this initiative, it was for us, an impossibility of it being a high school site. With the onset of a P3 process in a district going through that avenue, we, we saw that while the district is going down that P3 initiative, we continued to have discussions for this site for other uses outside of a high school. So, the imagery that is in the slide deck still is reflective of a high school, but also, in terms of when we were assessing and analyzing this site, we assessed it based off of what is the most intense thing that a school district uses land for. It's a high school, because you have stadium lights, you have noise, you have a lot of traffic. So, we still use those impacts to try to gauge, is this site suitable for a very intense thing, recognizing at this point, it's not going to be a high school, but we are still, when we do our analysis, assessing the most impactful thing a school district can use property for. So, we try to use that as like worst-case scenario. Could this, how would this impact the land? How would this impact the nearby infrastructure?
And my memory's not the best, but I think it was you, Mrs. Fields, that had asked us if you could, if we were to, of course, being a year ago, if we were to look at this site, could we in fact fit a high school on it, should we need to? And that was part of the genesis of laying out that initial slide all that long ago to look at that, just as Mr. Macklemore said.
Should the board ask us to bring this back in December to address any further questions before a vote, does that in any way, to Ms. Miller's question earlier, impact the timeline that we're on, or the possibility of securing this property at the price point that's been quoted to us?
I haven't voiced any, haven't heard anything from the sellers themselves, is that it would, we would lose the opportunity. But, again, I mean, we're still in talks with them, so.
Okay. So, there's no, there's no executed contract?
No, there's nothing.
Or timeline until the board votes?
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize Board Member Fields.
I agree with Ms. Miller. I think that if we were going to have any hesitation about this being approved, this should have been discussed, in my opinion, during the work session. It's very confusing now to me, because some of us have already wrote it. I know I have, as it relates to what has come before me. So, and then Superintendent Hyde is going to have to backtrack... So, and then Superintendent Hyde is going to have to backtrack, and he says he's okay doing that and bring something back to us next month. So, I think we need clarity on, are we going to, this should have been probably pulled if we were not going to be in agreement. I don't know. It's just a, right now, it's a hot mess.
Thank you, Board Member Fields. Board Member Keys.
So, I'll go back and say that, you know, we have had previous discussions about it, and under those previous discussions, I made the comment already about the utilities and the lack thereof and what the timeframe was for those. And the answer to that is there is no timeframe. We don't know when. So, I think, you know, right now, we've had a lengthy discussion amongst the board about this, and to move forward with still questions not answered, I think doesn't behoove responsible, being responsible with the district's money when there's still questions outlying. So, there's no danger, if there's no contract been signed, for us to talk about it more before we go spending, you know, over $90 million on a property that we may not be able to utilize for some time, based on utilities.
Mr. Green, would you please walk the chair and the board through the process of the motion that needs to be made in order to table this and bring it back to a subsequent meeting?
Table to, would you make a motion to table this?
We have a motion.
Okay.
A motion on the floor.
Correct, but then you can, parliamentary procedure-wise, you could move to table this motion on top of the motion that's already made.
Yeah. So, I would make a motion that we amend. The motion and table it.
You don't need, okay. So, for parliamentary procedure-wise, you don't have to amend the motion?
I make a motion that we table this agenda item to the December meeting.
There's been a motion to table this agenda item to our December, regularly-scheduled December meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we table this motion to the, or this, this item of business to the December, regularly-scheduled December meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, there's no discussion on tabling it, we will now proceed to vote. All those in favor of tabling this motion to the regularly-scheduled December meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those aye. All those opposed, same size?
Aye.
You're with the what?
Tabling.
Tabling, okay. All those opposed to tabling, say aye.
Aye.
We're just ignoring this vote that's currently up on our screen.
That, okay, so that vote is pending on the current vote we have.
So, what do you want me to do with that?
That's technology. I'm talking about parliamentary procedure-wise.
But for record-keeping, what would you like for us to do with what the current?
We could clear that.
If I.
It's not finalized yet.
If I may offer a suggestion, Mr. Chair, the cleanest way to do this is to withdraw that motion and then have the original person who made the initial motion to approve to withdraw their motion or amend their motion to table the topic. So, it seems convoluted, but it is the cleanest way for record-keeping and for the voting for that to take place. So, I believe.
So, not parliamentary procedure-wise, but for our internal electronic record-keeping, it's the best way?
It will meet, it will meet both.
All right. So.
Whoever made the last motion needs to withdraw their motion.
That would be Board Member?
You were the first.
Alan.
I'll rescind my motion to table the item.
Okay. And then, Ms. Wyatt, you will need to amend your motion or withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do we need a vote to withdraw or not? No? Okay. All right. So.
Wait. Now, you need, someone needs to make the motion to table it to the next meeting.
So, do I have a motion to table it to the next meeting in December?
I will motion to table.
Okay. It has been moved and properly seconded to table this motion, this item of business to our regularly-scheduled December meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will.
I didn't press the right button.
Okay. There is discussion. Board Member Wallace.
Thank you. I would just like to say that Superintendent Hyde, I appreciate your comments because I date a real estate attorney, and I'm intimately familiar with a lot of the challenges that you mentioned. And I have done my best to prepare for this meeting, although I'm not going to lie, having one more month to more intimately understand it. But I want you to know that I understand the challenges and intend on supporting, making this deal happen, given the needs that there are and the robust growth there is. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional discussion, we will now proceed to vote. All those in favor, please of tabling this motion to our regularly-scheduled December meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay. I hear a five to two vote in favor of tabling this to December. It passes. All right. Sorry, let me pull this up now. Okay. Now, we're to the part of our meeting. Sorry. I have to scroll through. Give me one second. Superintendent's report. Superintendent, you are now recognized. Do you have any report for us?
I do. So, I'm going to start with the Inspire Awards, and I could say a lot, but I think the video we're about to show you says all that needs to be said. We want to congratulate our Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, our Teacher of the Year, and our Employee of the Year. That's not the video. I'm trying to stall up. Here we go.
I am so excited to introduce you to a dynamic educator who truly exemplifies servant leadership. Please welcome the Polk County Principal of the Year, Rhonda Potter from Westwood Middle School.
Public school teachers are much more than just teachers of math.
Thank you.
I am so excited to introduce you to a dynamic educator who truly exemplifies servant leadership. Please welcome the Polk County Principal of the Year, Rhonda Potter from Westwood Middle School.
Public school teachers are much more than just teachers of math, science, reading, and writing. They are teachers of life. We motivate, inspire, and mold the future of our country. As public educators, we accept all students as they are, and we work to make sure they are all successful.
Remember, behind every competent student is the educator who quietly fought for them to be seen, heard, and believed in. Let us all continually strive to be these types of educators.
When you're standing up here on stage, many of you in the audience obviously saw them for the first time today, you can't help but be touched by the stories, you can't help but be inspired by the passion and the commitment that these individuals demonstrate. And what's even more amazing is that these are only 14 of 14,000 stories being told in our schools every single day by our amazing dedicated staff and our leaders. And for that, I sincerely say thank you. It truly takes a village, and you are an amazing group of villagers doing amazing things and inspirational things with our kids every day, and I'm blessed to know you. I'm blessed to work with you each day. So, without further ado, let's find out together who our school-related Employee of the Year is. Angelica Ortiz from Winston Academy of Engineering, District 5.
It's that awesome feeling, you know, feeding kids. I'm grateful being able to provide nourishment for them. Working for Polk County School have been a blessing for my life, so thank you for the opportunity.
And now, it's time to find out who our Teacher of the Year is. Elizabeth Heaton, Bartow IB Summerlin, District 3.
The students have given me so much. They've taught me so much, and they've invited me to be part of their journey, which makes me so happy and so proud every day. I'm so glad to be part of Polk County Public Schools.
And so, I'd also conclude that comment with recognizing Mr. Geary and his amazing team. I don't know if we can bring them in here for a moment because I know they're manning the screens next door and our social media and everything else that's going on. But between this graduation, the About Face Awards, and everything else, I think this team deserves some public recognition for all their hard work, their countless hours and dedication, because they really do go above and beyond. And I don't think you realize the turnaround time on a video like that, so, thank you all. And so, we have no Rick, we have no, there's more than three. I can promise you, there's more than three. But in the videos that they put together, you know, truly inspirational videos, one that just, for whatever reason, stands out the most to me, not that it's better, it just has a very different story, and it touched my heart to hear about one of our school's social workers or psychologists, counselors, who basically grew up in a war-torn community and literally went to school every day and had to look on the wall to see if one of our classmates had been killed the night before. And to overcome that adversity and to get to the level that she's achieved and to work with our students every day who are in crisis, I mean, that's an amazing story. And as I pointed out, though, that's just one of all the amazing people who are working in our schools every single day to make the magic happen. So, very much appreciate that, and thank you, Board Members, for your attendance and participation. It's a wonderful event and one very much worth celebrating. I wish the community as a whole could participate and cherish these individuals as much as we do. So, thank you for that time. Board Members, as you know, I do have some prepared comments because I want to make sure that what I say comes across the way it was intended. I'll say good evening to you again. As you know, the Polk County Board of County Commissioners voted today to approve or move the school board's resolution requesting placement of the millage referendum on the November 2026 ballot, as required by Florida statute. This action ensures that the direction or decision now rests exactly where the law intends, with the voters of Polk County. Now, I want to address a narrative that surfaced during the commissioners' discussion. Several expressed concerns about being blamed for voting for a tax increase, and I want to continue to reiterate and make sure it's very clearly stated that that concern is a flawed concern. The BOCC did not vote to raise taxes. They fulfilled their statutory and constitutional obligations by allowing this issue to move forward so that voters, and voters alone, can decide whether or not to self-impose a millage tax referendum to support public education. That decision rests with the people of Polk County, not solely with the commission, not solely with our school board. I also want to address repeated claims of a breakdown of communication between the school board and the BOCC. While we do not expect the commissioners to watch every school board meeting, it is simply not accurate to suggest that the county was unaware of this effort. Our staff coordinated consistently with the BOCC staff regarding required notes, statutory steps, and agenda placement, and the school board's vote was prominently covered by local media. So, while no one expects individuals to monitor all of our meetings minute by minute, I do expect honesty and transparency about the fact that conversations did occur, information was readily available, and the district did its part to maintain open communication. Lastly, I want to address comments made by one of our commissioners who stated that based solely on a handful of comments during our meeting today, that the school district is broken. That characterization is not only inaccurate, it's uninformed. Here are the facts about Polk County Public Schools over the past four years. Our district grade has improved to a beat. Student performance continues to rise. Graduation rates continue to improve. In fact, our preliminary data right now shows that we will see yet another increase in our graduation rate for the 24-25 school year. We've expanded our workforce and career tech ed pathways. The number of industry certifications has improved year over year. AP, IB certifications or passing scores and tests, and not only those, but participation rates have continued to increase. We've expanded our early childhood initiatives. We have been innovators in this area, partnering with outside providers to reduce the overall costs for them and for our own employees so they can participate in early childhood options. We've stabilized our staffing to the extent that we can with an 88% retention rate. However, the referendum is the difference-maker, as we see it. We've increased our transparency. We publish more data, more dashboards, more newsletters, more social media posts, and podcasts than at any other time in our district's history. School safety enhancements have continued to be implemented. We've earned national recognition for our career education, arts programming, and community partnerships, including our partnerships at Florida Southern College, Disney Imagination Campus, Public Charities recognized this evening, TECO, and countless others. These are not indicators of a broken system. They are indicators of a district that's improving, innovating, and moving forward, despite funding limitations and increased demands. It's unfortunate to hear one of our elected officials make sweeping judgments without engaging in any substantive conversations or attempts to become knowledgeable regarding our operations, our performance data, or our overall achievements. Polk County Public School educates more than 116,000 students. We employ nearly 14,000 dedicated professionals. As a result, we contribute significantly to the economic future of this county. One would think, that as arguably the largest employer in Polk County and the only one whose end product has a direct impact on sustaining our county's future, that a commissioner would take time to become better informed. Anyone who speaks about Polk County Public Schools should do so with an understanding of the facts, not assumptions or speculation. As a result, I feel obligated to personally invite all of our county commissioners to participate in next year's class of Polk County Public Schools cadre for Inside PCPS. There are always issues that plague systems, and as shared by one of our commissioners, there's an acknowledgement that the issues shared today have existed for a very long time in Polk County. Yet, we strive daily to address these issues despite our constraints. I can assure you that Polk County Public Schools is far from broken. Polk County Public Schools is stronger today than it's been in many years, and we're just getting started. But we must be able to be competitive when it comes to salaries and benefits to solidify what we've achieved and to ensure that we're able to maintain our positive trajectory. And I thank you for the opportunity this evening for the superintendent's report, and I will conclude with, the next work session and board meeting will be held on December 9th, 2025. I will, I will give you money afterwards. Work session will begin. Work session tomorrow. That's good. That's actually good. That is good. Work session, work session will begin at 12:30 PM, and the board meeting will begin at 5:00 PM. The meetings will be held at the district office located at 1915 South Florale Avenue in Bartow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we will move to our attorney's report. Mr. Green, do you have a report tonight?
No, I do not.
Thank you, sir. Next, item on our agenda is the auditor's report. Do you have a report tonight, Ms. Matthews?
No.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to go to our board member reports. So, I'm going to start, we'll start with District 1 and work our way down, so we'll start with Board Member Allen, District 1.
Thank you, Chair Sharpless. First of all, I want to say, congrats to our newest board member, Kate Wallace. Well done. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. Congrats to our chair and vice chair. Appreciate your willingness to step in and serve. I want to say, congrats to Ms. Vega, Ms. Linda, for your continued pursuit of excellence. So, great to recognize you all tonight. First of all, PCPS Teacher and School-Related Employee of the Year event was definitely a success. I loved the vid. All of that content, just churning on the stories. Without their stories, the video, the film would be empty. And so, I appreciate the work of our team, the PR staff, for building such quality content. It demonstrates excellence in the way that we present the great work that's being done around the county. So, thank you to our PR team for the great work. I want to say thanks to MidFlorida Credit Union and then the collective generosity of all of our sponsors. Without them, we would not be able to honor in such capacity. Secondly, the air traffic control program. This initiative has been moving forward, and we have had our very first certified control tower operator, and we celebrated her. Madison Gandy is our first alumni. So, I'm thinking about, you know, we always want to track our alumni, so we've got one alumni to track thus far, but we look forward to celebrating her and the critical work that she has done in being our very first graduate of the air traffic control program at Travis. Huge accomplishment. I wanted to draw attention to the Florida School Counselor Association event that happened last week. I want to say congrats to our very own Rachel, comes from Carlton Palmer Elementary. Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you. from Carlton Palmer Elementary. Yeah, absolutely. She was honored actually as the Florida School Counselor Rising Star. So, congrats to her. I know I'd passed by Carlton Palmer, I pulled in the driveway and noticed that the principal's car was missing, and I shot him a text. I'm like, "Principal Draper, where are you, man?" And he shot me a text. He was sitting at dinner, celebrating her in Orlando last week. So, congrats also to Ashley Scott from Sleepy Hill Elementary, who was recognized as the School Counselor of the Year nominee. We're definitely proud. I would say that Polk County, I saw this, it was noted that Polk County had the largest number of counselors in attendance, which was pretty cool. Well done. And Superintendent, I appreciate your strong staunch words. I was in the boardroom today, and I reject the words stated from one particular commissioner as well. I think the absurdity of his language demonstrated a minimal sense of knowing. And it's, it's clear that they haven't sat on our front porch, and, but we haven't sat on their front porches as well. So, I know there's a mutual thing that we can do to better communication across the board, but it was quite startling to hear those words today in the boardroom, for sure. And, and that is not the case. It's not true at all. And I reject those words, for sure. Chair Sharpless, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Allen. Next, we will go to Board Member Travis Keys.
All right. Well, hold on to your seats, because I've got to listen. I'll try to go fast. So, I want to say that, number one, I was absolutely floored by the environment walking into the Inspire Awards, right? Having never been before, this was my first instance as a board member, I was just in awe, and, and I should be, because we owe it to our educators and our school-related employees, those honors. And to have that many people in a room celebrating each other was just absolutely fantastic. I felt like I was at a world-class gala, and it, and it's meant to be that way. So, what an awesome experience. Also, was honored to share our legislative agenda with Inside PCPS, and, and give that to our community members and garner their support for our legislative initiatives. Got to attend the Marching Band MPA competition at Dennison High School as a board member, and I will tell you, just to see the amount of talent we have, absolutely fantastic. I'm often, I'm often amazed, but I'm never surprised, because we have quite a, quite a number of talented students, and to see the joy in their faces, they're announcing these scores, and they're announcing superior, superior, and you could just see the drum majors light up and get so excited. I'm right there with them, like, I want to yell and shout too. So, that was absolutely fantastic event. The ribbon cutting for the new cafeteria at Spook Hill, what a wonderful facility, that it's not just a cafeteria, but multi-use, I think with the, with the auditorium and the classrooms in the back. What a, what a good use of space. And thank you to Roddy Construction, their team for helping out with that. And then, the Farm Bureau Shoot Aim Up for Ag in Support of Education. It's always fun when you get to get a gun in your hands and bust clays. So, thank you for PEF, for getting us a spot there and sponsoring that. It was quite a good time, because ag and education is a big thing, and Mr. Sharpless, I know, supports that avidly, but what a great opportunity. Also, want to thank the superintendent for your comments. I think it's good that we show solidarity and support behind those initiatives and to call out errors as we see them. And so, thank you for your, for your words. And then, last, but certainly not least, and this is when I kind of get on my soapbox on, I was able to, after the event, Aim Up for Ag, I was notified by my wife that our daughter's schools, Davenport School of the Arts, had their junior thespian program, which I didn't think I was able to attend, but she sent me a message. And, and I brag on them a little bit, but also, it's, it's, it's one of my schools. They did 18 acts at the Junior Thespian Awards for District 9, achieved 14 superiors, four high excellence, four out of eight Critics' Choice, which is best in show, right? Two honorable mentions and three perfect scores. Never in the history of Davenport School of the Arts have they ever hide or scored that well. And what an amazing experience. So, congratulations to Mrs. Kane and Mr. Mosenberg for the success they had there. You guys know I'm just such an advocate for the arts in our schools, and I think they enrich the students. So, what a good job they did there, and great job DSA for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Board Member Keys. Now, we'll go to Board Member Wallace for her report.
Thank you. I'll keep it quick, too. First, I'd like to thank Elizabeth Heaton, who was acknowledged as the Polk County Teacher of the Year, because she is from my district as well as my alma mater. So, we are not personally acquainted, but I certainly look forward to meeting her, congratulating her. And as a new board member, I look forward to reaching out to all of the schools in my district and making sure that they know me and I know them, and getting to know, I've had the pleasure and privilege of growing up here and being around here, but not at that level. So, I really look forward to digging in and, and making sure that I really get more intimately familiar with the district and seeing all the great things that are happening, and making sure I'm out there. We're still setting up my email. We're still setting up some of those things. I started a Facebook group for anybody who wants to follow me. It's Kate Wallace, Polk County Publics, Polk County School Board, District 3. So, find me there. If anybody who wants to reach me or the, or the board office can help contact me. If anybody from the public wants to contact me, invite me to something, tell me something I need to show up to, let me know. I'm looking forward to hitting the ground running even with the holidays. I'd also like to just share a wealth of congratulations across the board, everybody, all the recognitions, our new chair and vice chair. Looking forward to working with you all. Thank you again. Congratulations to the district on outstanding Inspire Awards event that I was not yet eligible to attend, but I look forward to hopefully attending in the future. And then, I'd like to acknowledge a student who is in the audience, speaking of the MPA, but he is a drum major for Barto's Band, which I know got a superior. So, congratulations, Trey, over there in the audience. Way to go. And then, there is one last person that I wanted to specifically acknowledge that did not make it into my remarks earlier, because I was squarely focused on my biological family and my roots being from Barto, but someone came along after those things, and that's my boyfriend, Jonathan. So, he's here. We met, we met here in Lakeland. We had a boss in common, and he is that real estate attorney I was mentioning, but he's been an indelible force, presence, support. This has been a while. I'm not complaining. I'm so thrilled to be here. When you sign up for something like this, it's a part-time job. Marrying that with a full-time job, it affects the people in your life, mostly in a good way, but he's been supporting me, and I just want to tell you I love you and I appreciate you. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Wallace. Now, I will go to Board Member Wyatt.
Thank you. Jonathan, we'll get you in touch with the spouses' support group before you leave. But I, Kate, congratulations. We're thrilled to have you up here with us. Congratulations on your appointment. And I also want to congratulate you, because you don't know this yet, but you are getting a steal from Winter Haven High School and Mr. Ulch. I am very sad to see him leaving Winter Haven, but I am thrilled for all of the things he'll be doing at Summerlin. So, congratulations on that as well, because he's a winner. But I don't have a ton of comments for this month. I had a little life event, so I've been a little MIA the past couple of weeks. But I do want to give a shout out to our risk management department, because we had a very lengthy conversation at our October work session, beginning of October, and they made some very swift and significant changes to open enrollment, to extend it, making it through the end of October, also to convert some of those one-on-one meetings to virtual meetings, so that our teachers and staff members that don't necessarily work at the district office could still attend those during the regular workday. There's still a lot of, a lot of room for growth, as we, we all know, but I just want to thank them for implementing some of those as swiftly as they did, to make sure that our employees had the best opportunity to really understand what their health insurance plan was, and look forward to all of the improvements to come as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Board Member Wyatt. Now, I'll recognize Board Member Fields.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. I wanted to give a shout out to the First South Florida Missionary Baptist Association. Last week, they recognized three of our schools. They received $325, I'm sorry, $325, $10 Walmart gift cards. The value of that is like close to $4,000 for each school, and that would be North Lakeland, Purcell, and Crystal Lake Elementary. And I have asked Superintendent Hyde if we can recognize them at our December board meeting. So, hopefully, we're going to be able to get that to happen, and I appreciate Superintendent Hyde suggesting that. And I serve on the Legislative Subcommittee and the Advocacy Committee for the Florida School Board Association. We've been having meetings almost every week, and so, we're just about at a point, I think, of being able to conclude that as we get ready to attend the, the Winter School Board Association Conference. And the Inspire Awards were so inspiring. An appropriate word, I would say, a description. And one of the things that was so impressive to me was the School Related Employee of the Year. Angelica Ortiz talked about what she valued most in her position is knowing that kids are fed, and many kids don't get a meal other than what they get at school. And to me, that was just so encouraging to know that she has a passion and a love to make sure that, that our kids are taken care of. So, we want to congratulate her, and also, Ms. Eaton, for her award as the Teacher of the Year. Now, the last thing that I would like to say, had a chance to go to the agenda study for the Board of County Commissioners on Friday, and then it went to the board meeting on this morning, and I would say that I was very disturbed, what I heard in conversation. And prior to that, very disturbed when they had a prior meeting and they implied that we were disingenuous. And I don't know what that means, disingenuous. And one of the things that one of the commissioners wanted to know on Friday is if we were going to advocate for the tax referendum. So, I don't know why we would put something on referendum, on the ballot for voters and not advocate for it. And I don't know how it would be thought that we would not do our very best to educate the voters, so that they would know what they need to vote for. And I think the, the biggest factor is, we were not trying to put any ownership to the Board of County Commissioners as it relates to a tax increase. We were just trying to get them to do what they are required to do. And thank God that they did that today. I think that one of the things that we all know, we all have been talking about this for over a year. So, it's not like this is something that just came out of the clear blue sky. And we know that there's going to be a lot of work involved, and we are up for the task. And to me, and this is just my thought, is that we have not been respected, and we are an elected body, just as they are. And I think that just as we would go to their house and respect them, they should come to our house and respect us. And I would encourage us to encourage them to maybe visit some of our schools, just spend a day, and find out what's involved, because our school district is not broken. Are we perfect? No, we're not. But we are making a lot of progress, and I am proud to be a part of the Polk County Public School. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Board Member Fields. I will now recognize Board Member Miller.
Thank you. I'll, I have just a few comments. I also want to mention the MPA Marching Band Competition. I'm very proud of Tennerock, the Tennerock Marching Titans. For the first time since they have been in existence, they receive straight superiors, and that is a lot of work. And we love that, the dedication to that, those band members. And some of them are new to instruments when they get there. These aren't students who've had a lot of work with instruments. So, the fact, the fact that they can come in and work hard to get straight superiors, I think is an amazing feat. I also want to mention the fun I had with Board Member Wyatt, probably too much fun, speaking to the Randy Roberts Foundation. Mayor-elect McCarley has a foundation in memory of her husband that was involved in politics and all the work done in teaching kids the political process. And so, they asked different elected officials to come and share their informa, share things about them. We got off on all kinds of fun topics. But just listening to the kids and the hope they have, and what the future holds for them and holds for the process, was exciting, and knowing that we're building those leaders right here in Polk County. If you've not had your child, if they're a junior or upcoming junior in high school, they really should look into that program. It's one of the many leadership opportunities we offer for students, and I was very excited to take part in that. Listening to the comments, I think Ms. Field said it best, and she does have the historical content and has been here to share the history of the school board and how people look at the school board in Polk County. I joked that this is the first superintendent, maybe that would have responded so quickly and fiercely to some of the comments that were, that were mentioned at the board meeting. I have invited our, our county commissioner, my county commissioner, to events. I want us to have them and make those invitations open, because I always try to see the light, and maybe they, maybe you just don't know. Maybe you don't know what we're doing here. If you've never had kids in our system, if you haven't volunteered in our schools, then some of the things you see in the news or you think nationally, you see nationally, maybe you do believe it's happening. Maybe you haven't seen the work we've done in audits and all the work that's done here. So, I'm just going to keep that door open and hope that my other colleagues do that as well and invite them. Everything, you know, we had Mayor, we had Melanie Balle show up to probably every graduation. I think she's one of few elected officials that just was super involved with what was going on in our schools, and I think we need more of that, especially when we should be working in a collaborative effort. So, I'm looking forward to having them get involved and maybe opening, opening others' eyes. So, what we do here, it's going to be a heavy lift. I don't care how much marketing we do, which we should start today. It will be a heavy lift, this referendum in this time, and it will be a lot of work, and it will take everyone working and moving in the same direction. So, and that's difficult. We do need to remind people that we are the largest employer in this county, even though we flip that with Publix every once in a while. We, we do educate the majority of the students in this county, and, you know, we want accountability and we want best practice for every student, no matter what school you go to. And I think that has to be part of our message. But I appreciate the people that came tonight, and I'm not going to take up any more of your time. Thank you, Chair Sharpless.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. I will be brief with my comments tonight. First, I want to congratulate Kate Wallace, the newest board member for District 3. Kate, I, you know, it's been a long time since, since the University of Florida as freshmen and crossing each other's paths. You know, I've seen you and our friendship throughout many years grow to where you were an expert in educational policy. So, I welcome you on this board. As a fellow board member, I know you will, you will add significant knowledge to us, and for that, I thank you. I also want to thank you, Kate, for inviting Jenna Nolte here tonight. That was a class act. Try not to get emotional. Rick and I became friends as new board members, and, and it was tough. It was tough to see him go. That being said, thank you for inviting his, his daughter here tonight. I know that means a lot to their family. I want to congratulate Yvette and Linda, Yvette Vega, Linda Baldick, earning the distinction of the Florida School Board Association Certified Support Professional. It took a lot of training. I know, because I went through, and I became a certified board member through the same organization. So, I know the value that's there. Want to thank you for taking your job seriously and for going and earning those. And Linda, I know Linda's not in here, but Linda as well. I want to thank another person in the audience that hasn't been recognized, Haynes City Commissioner Omar Rojo. He's here tonight. Thank you for being an elected official, just like we were talking about, and being here and listening to us. We appreciate that, Omar. I'm sorry? Oh, yes, yes. Thank you for bringing ice cream to our students as well. But seriously, thank you for taking that, that initiative to being here, for being here tonight. We appreciate that. I, I'm only going to talk about a couple of events, three to be exact. The first one, Inspire Awards. I say it every year. It is appropriately named, because I sit there every year and I come away inspired. Our teachers, our school-related employees, they do the work every day. The hands-on work with our students, and we talk about students first, right? Thank you, thank you, thank you to our staff for all the hard work you do. Board Member Keys mentioned this, but me and him both attended Spook Hill's Cafeteria ribbon, ribbon cutting. First, want to thank the voters who approved the half-cent sales tax that funded that addition, because, again, we, we need additional funds. That sales tax goes specifically only to construction. It cannot go towards salaries or anything. And that was approved back in 2018, and it's helped And that was approved back in 2018, and it's helped us out. And I serve on the half-cent sales tax committee as a board representative. I know the hard work the committee does, all the different construction projects we have around the district. And personally, that ribbon cutting meant a lot to me because it was the first one that I got to attend in my district that my father, who is one of our construction coordinators for our district, it was his project. So I got to be there at the project in my district, in my hometown, that my dad was the one that was in charge of the project from the district standpoint. So it just meant a lot to me. So thank you, Board Member Keys, for being there, too. And the last thing I'll talk about, I'm going to end on somewhat of a sad note. But this morning before our work session, I attended the, the funeral of Fort Meade Commissioner James Possum Shale. Possum, as I got to know him, they said, the preacher said it correctly. The first person, when they went to draw their blood, that they drew out black and gold. Because that man, that commissioner, eat, sleep, breathe the Fort Meade community. He loved the Fort Meade community. He's also a former sheriff's officer, deputy officer. And again, current, he was, he passed away as a city commissioner in Fort Meade. Everyone in that community, they, they said, when they had an issue when he was a deputy, they didn't call the sheriff's office. They just went by Possum's house. And they said, hey, we have an issue over here, and Possum will go take care of it. He will be remembered by one word: servant. He served the public as a commissioner, as a deputy, as a guy who would drive the bus, the school bus, full of football players to a playoff game, just truly cared about the schools down there, the community down there. And it was my honor to attend Commissioner Shale's funeral. And with that, it will conclude our board reports. The next item on our agenda is public comments addressing items not on our agenda tonight. As noted earlier, to register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and then the light, you'll hear a beep when your time is concluded. Please note that although the board encourages community participation, no immediate action will be taken on items presented during the public comment portion of the meeting tonight. If you, if follow-up board action is required, then the matter may be placed on the agenda at a subsequent meeting in accordance with school board policy. I have a list of individuals who have signed up to speak today. Could you please come forward when your name is called? Additionally, there is a red line over here, and so when, when you are on deck, please stand behind the red line. First off, we have Kristy Kirkland, and on deck is Teresa McKay.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Keys, Mr. Allen, and Mr. Hyde for joining us this morning at the Board of Commissioners meetings. We really appreciate the stance that you took with us. Then I'd like to point out some discrepancies for the salaries that teachers and our school board members are making. We talked about fiscal responsibility with the way we spend our money, purchasing property, that type of thing, and what our environment is right now. One of my biggest concerns was our last bargaining meeting. Heather Jenkins made the statement that if we budgeted for every expense we have to budget for, and there are funds left over, that is what we would take to Mr. Hyde and say, this is available, and go from there. That was in response to how is budgeting done for teacher salary? That's a slap in the face. We have educators that have been here forever, that have had, I don't know how much you know of the history. 2009, 2010, our veteran teachers took a pay cut, some of them by $2,000. You can pull up the salary scales. Email me. I'll be happy to send you the pictures of the salary scales from those times. In that proportionate time, we'll start with 2016 and compare it to last year. Please do not take any offense to this. I am not trying to say these people don't deserve what they've earned, okay? Our district attorney, his salary has gone up by 8%. The human relations chief, by 27%. Our superintendent, by 25%. A 23-year veteran teacher, 4.8%. There's a huge discrepancy. We have to do better for our teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkland. Next up is Teresa McKay. On deck is Stephanie Yokum.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Hyde. My name is Dr. Teresa McKay, and I teach second grade at Garden Grove Elementary. I'm here tonight to discuss an issue that affects classrooms across Polk County, and it happens every single day. The need for a policy that allows violent or severely aggressive students to be removed from the classroom for the remainder of the day following a major incident. As teachers, we believe deeply in supporting the whole child. We use PBIS, restorative practices, de-escalation strategies, and referrals to counseling. But even with all of these supports, some students have significant emotional and behavioral disorders that require interventions beyond what a general education classroom can safely provide. This year, I have a student diagnosed with DMDD, that is disruptive mood dysregulation disorder. This child experiences extreme emotional outbursts. He came at me with a sharpened pencil to stab me. He throws objects, flips chairs, desks, and makes threats. These crises can last from 20 to 40 minutes. During that time, instruction stops, learning stops, and my other students are frightened. Some cry, some cover their ears, and several have told me they no longer feel safe. One of my students actually commented that she had thought that I had died because he came at me with a pencil. Yet after these episodes, current procedures often require that the student be returned to the class almost immediately. This means that my students and I go right back into an unstable environment waiting for the next crisis. I have tremendous compassion for this child. But keeping him in the classroom during acute dysregulation is unsafe for them, unsafe for their peers, and incredibly disruptive to everyone's learning. Full-day removal is not punishment, is a necessary safety measure that allows a child in crisis to receive appropriate behavioral support, counseling, regulation time, and a structured plan for reentry. It also protects the instructional rights and emotional well-being of the 18 to other 20 children in the classroom who deserve a calm, secure learning environment. Our instructors, I mean, I'm sorry, our administrators have been incredibly supportive of this and of us. I have a fellow teacher that is here with me who also has one of these students. But often, they will tell me that their hands are tied because of the paperwork that they have to go through, the documentation they have to collect, which is very unfair to us and to these students. So I thank you for your time for listening to this and your dedication to the well-being of every child in Polk County.
Next up, we have Stephanie Yokum, and on deck, we have Kat Nickel.
Hey, guys. My name is Stephanie Yokum. I am the president of the Polk Education Association. Few remarks. We go to bargaining again tomorrow, and I believe it's our fifth time meeting. We have a reasonable request on the table. I gave you guys a paper minus you, Ms. Wallace, that I will get to you and get you caught up to speed real quick on what's going on. What's on the table is very reasonable. It is a 2.5% increase with the commitment that the district team come and actually, let's talk about the non-economics that we put on the table when we lowered the proposal after new personnel counts were, were agreed to. Most of the districts around central Florida that have settled have settled between 2.5% and 4%. With Orange County being kind of the outlier with 4% with their highly effective teachers. This is not an unreasonable request. You have the money within your budget to do it. And if your CFO is telling you that you don't, you need to dig deep. Because we are on the horizon of a millage referendum. We are going to work vigorously and diligently to get this passed. Our folks will be the boots on the ground. We are bringing significant money to the table for this millage, and we expect our board to continue to support us in this endeavor. We have to get through two more school years before we start seeing millage money if the voters, when the voters of Polk County pass this. And so we must also, in the next two school years, work to keep people here so that they don't leave in the interim. We have 450 substitutes in classrooms, and we have 447 vacancies that those subs are filling right now. We must continue to work on the things that we can to keep people in the classrooms. And honestly, it's not just money. I mean, even though money obviously helps, but when you heard Ms. McKay talk, it's also the violent behavior we're dealing with, with a very small minority of our children. They need help, and they're not getting the help that they need in a classroom that can't support them. And so we need to talk through those solutions. We need to support our educators so that it's not just the money. Because when you, when you, when you underpay somebody and then also make their working conditions untenable, then they leave. But if they are felt supported and they feel valued, they tend to [BLEEP]. Because we know that hope is on the horizon with this millage referendum. And so we must continue to work and diligently put good money on the table, not out of the realm of your budget to [BLEEP] this 2.5% offer tomorrow. So, Mr. Hyde, I hope that you meant what you said when you [BLEEP]. Because we are looking for the money tomorrow to get this deal done so that we can go into winter break happy and ready to work on this millage referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yokum. Next up is Kat Nickel. On deck is Meg Gadley.
Good evening, listening to your board members. And so I wanted, I want to keep this brief. I want to say that I was there at the BOCC meeting this morning, and I don't think that they have an accurate picture of what's going on in Polk County public schools, even though I, for a fact, know a lot of the issues that we still face. And like Ms. Field says, we are not perfect. But we see every day, and in each one of your reports, and in all of the events that you attend, how hard our people are working, how much our children are learning and growing, and the amazing impact that we are making. But the trick here is that it is your employees in those schools that are making these amazing things happen. Yesterday, you had 450 Kelly subs covering instructional vacancies. That's not an absent, Ms. so-and-so got sick and had to fill in. This is a vacancy that you have been unable to fill as of November 18th. For those 450 classrooms, those students are going perhaps from that classroom to another classroom, and maybe they do have a certified teacher in their classroom, but they've just spent the last period or the last block of time with somebody who was not properly trained to handle and deal with some of these issues. And I truly believe that is where a lot of our behavior concerns are coming from, is a lack of structure. And so if you do not want to see that vacancy number increase yet again from the last few years as it has, you are going to have to, as Ms. Yokum said, dig deep. Find every available penny to put into your raises. Push your employees tomorrow at that bargaining table to come off as much as they can possibly can. Because you need to retain us for the next few years. I do hope, and I am fairly confident, that that millage will pass. But that's a few years before we see that money. And no offense, but y'all have 450 teacher vacancies right now. That's 10% of your classroom staff. That is 10% of your classrooms do not have a certified teacher. That's over 90,000, 9,000 students. That's roughly 10% of [BLEEP] who are not being served by a qualified professional every day. So please instruct your people as possible and to listen to our language concerns, because also, as Ms. Yokum said, it's not just about the money that does [BLEEP] in this particular economy. But we also have some [BLEEP] to bring in because we need our work lives to be better if we're going to try to hobble through on the [BLEEP] not keeping up with inflation income that we're all working for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nickel. Next up, we have Meg Gadley. On deck, Patrick Bentley.
Good evening. My name is Meg Gadley. I work at Davenport Elementary. I've been with you guys since 2020 when Davenport opened, so I just kind of want to put a little bit of background. I came from Duval County. Duval County had a little bit of reorganization. They needed a structure. I came down to Polk County because I was, first off, I was happier. You guys had a little bit of better understanding of what was going on for your students. You had a higher pay rate and all of that. So I'm going to kind of echo some of the colleagues as well. You need to dig a little deeper. And I'm not saying necessarily you guys, but we need to dig a little deeper. A lot of our staff right now are working multiple jobs to survive. Many cannot afford to live in Polk County. Many are living outside of Polk County and coming in to support the students that are here. We could not continue to make our employees choose between paying their bills, paying their mortgage, buying groceries, or feeding their children. Competitive pay isn't optional. It's the only way to stabilize our workforce, reduce our vacancies, and give students the consistency they deserve. I'm asking you, as a board, to choose people. Choose your students, choose your teachers. Choose to invest in every dollar bill into raising and recruiting educators who make this district functional. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gadley. Next up, Patrick Bentley. On deck, Kaitlyn Gaddy.
My name is Patrick Bentley. I am Secretary Treasurer for PEA, as well as I am still a classroom teacher at Haynes City High School, teaching economics. I'm not going to beat the dead horse on pay. We know it's an issue. You guys know it's an issue. Continue to dig deeper. What I do want to bring up is we have a way for you guys to save some money. Wasn't really enjoyed at the last bargaining session, but we have asked district personnel to fill in for sub slots. It costs you $0 because you're saving money from a Kelly sub, and it puts you guys back in the classroom, seeing what our day-to-day is. I love that you come out for our big events, our big hurrahs and our great moments, but you guys are missing the average day, the bad day, the worst day possible. Please, I challenge you all to find a school, cover for a teacher for the day. Go in, our sub plans are ready, I promise you. Just be there for the kids and see what our normal day is. I'm pretty sure most of you have forgotten, because we've all been out of the classroom for a very long time. Things are different. And it hurts for me to say that, but all of us can agree, things are very different now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Next up, Kaitlyn Gaddy. On deck, Tyler Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I just want to start with that I have lived in Polk County my entire life within 15 minutes of this very building. And I grew up in a mixture of private and public schools, and being able to see the difference makes me so grateful for our public schools. I am a passionate elementary teacher, and I love my job and my kids, but each year, I consider leaving more and more. I am proud of the work that is happening, the improvements we've discussed, yet many other counties and states are so far better off, and we have a long way to go to catch up. But I want to see my home improve. I don't want to give up and leave. I want our state to be better. I want this county and our state to be somewhere I can say I'm proud to be from. Subs put a stress, these long-term subs, to piggyback off of what others have said. They put a stress on our teachers because we are calming the storms from the classrooms that they are coming from that are dysregulated. I would know because I've been in that position for the last three years and lost valuable instructional time nearly every day. We can't improve. We can't get better. We can't put students first when we don't put resources where they are needed. You say that, you know, our students come first and that you appreciate your teachers. You say yourself, we're amazing, and we are. We care so much, we put in so much, but words mean little when your actions don't match them. I implore you to put your money where your mouth is, address the state about funding more aggressively, and prove that you truly want to keep good teachers and truly give our students the best and put them first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaddy. Thank you, Ms. Gaddy. Next up, Tyler Anderson. On deck, Tamaris Ruff.
Hi, thank you. Hello, I'm Tyler Anderson. I'm an elementary music teacher at Jesse Keen Elementary, and I just want to really just, really just bring out the idea that everyone's been talking about with the pays overall, and that while basically the overall idea of a 1% wage is, you know, itself a gesture, we really need the support overall because what we're just missing is just the fact that we really need not a luxury or anything like that, but just overall making sure that everyone, our teachers, our staff, our parents, they're just having a stable type of bank account in general. Teachers are the heartbeat of our communities. They're the guiding hands. They're the ones that guide our generation. They encourage growth, and of course, they're there on the toughest days. And it's just challenging when overall our professionals are just having difficulties with paying for rent for apartments or for homes. I mean, even me, I'm trying to do something, for example, to support my parents, and it's challenging to do that when it's, it's overall just difficult to have the money to be there consistently. And this is not just a personal hardship. It's showing that, how we value the work that keeps our society moving forward. A 2.5 increase isn't just about money. It's about the retention. As some of the colleagues mentioned, this is the key to assuring that we have enough teachers in Polk County and that we have less of these vacancies for all these schools that we want to make sure we have qualified teachers for. But we've got to start at the roots of why we need to essentially like support ourselves financially as well. If we truly believe that education shapes the world, we have to stand by the, we have to stand by the people who deliver every day. So, the request is simple. Even though a 2.5% increase isn't really much in comparison to what we originally proposed in bargaining, that is a statement that shows that we, we care about our teachers and that we care not for supporting a luxury, but just for essential needs. As mentioned about the motto before, if we really want to truly follow the motto, "Students First," we have to also make sure we're supporting our staff as well and making sure that stable finances happen first as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next up, we have Tamaris Ruff, and then on deck, we have Diane Dreskler.
Hi, I'm Tamaris Roth, and I am an inclusion teacher at Lake Gibson Middle School, and I am here today to address the retention of teachers. There's currently multiple long-term subs at my school, and in one class, we are on, I believe, number three, and it is an inclusion math class. So the subs that are coming in, they're, they're doing their best with what they have, but they are not trained to work with our students with disabilities. And as we all know, that students with disabilities, sometimes they need extra supports, and a lot of the subs that I have dealt with, they don't understand how to talk to the students calmly or even follow an IEP. And without the IEPs being followed, these students are being left behind. I have students that I am their case manager for right now that are failing certain classes, and when I speak to the teacher, they have no idea how to give them extra time or how to provide them with the Texas speech or any of their accommodations. And these are teachers that are filling classes that are mostly filled with students with IEPs that have not tested well on their state assessments. And I'm, so I, whatever we need to do to get certified teachers that are trained to work with our disabled students, we need to come to an agreement to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Next up, we have Diane Dreskler. On deck, Bob Nichol.
Hello, my name is Diane Dreskler. I'm a high school teacher at Kathleen Senior High School, and I was recruited by Polk County Public Schools from Ohio to come and teach back in 2017. And something that's become a bit of a culture shock that I still get annoyed to from time to time is we move much quicker with a lot more sense of urgency about things up north, and that's not something I've encountered very much of here. And I think that is one of the reasons why it's so frustrating when contract negotiations get drawn out, not week to week, but month to month. Last year, we spent the whole entire school year negotiating a pay raise that we all agree was needed, but just squabbling over what needed to be done and drawing out things that could have been done with much more urgency. It feels like the board approaches negotiations like they're discussing an elective cosmetic surgery when in reality, we're running an ER. You're hemorrhaging staff. Just in the past month or two, a colleague said to me when I pulled into the staff parking lot how empty it was. We have lost a lot of staff members just in the past couple weeks. Just last week, our veteran ag teacher told me he's leaving for the private sector. He's already gone because he did the math, and he said even at my top level pay that he could possibly make here at the county, it didn't even come close to what he was being offered, and he had to do what was best for him and his family, even though he loved his job, even though he's been with Polk County schools for many, many years, and even knowing that if he left, he was leaving an entire department to be run by long-term subs, an agricultural department at a high school that boasts a proud FFA club that has machine equipment, that has livestock, that has plants, that has certification programs, now being run entirely by long-term subs because the highly qualified teachers who were in those classrooms needed to make hard decisions, and they couldn't wait around for us to make those hard decisions at negotiations. So I implore you to approach negotiations with much more urgency because you can't wait two years, as Stephanie Yocum said, for that referendum to get passed. You need to move now, and you need to address the concerns that staff have now because they will be gone. There won't be anybody here to benefit from the referendum in two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dreskler. Next up, Bob Nichol. On deck, Brandon Santiago.
Good evening. My name is Bob Nichol. I'm an ESE inclusion teacher at Boone Middle School. First off, Mr. Hyde, I want to really thank you for your strong words tonight because I was also at the county commission meeting this morning, and it's, it's, it's really refreshing to hear a superintendent speak up the way you did, so I appreciate that. It's good to see Mr. Arroyo here. He came to our multicultural night at Boone Middle School, which was a fabulous event. And I also want to let you know that I actually watched the Inspire Awards on the district's YouTube channel from a hotel room in Livonia, Georgia, because I took my youngest son up to the FSU Clemson game, and Ms. Neal from Boone Middle was up for Employee of the Year, and the band director at George Jenkins was up for Teacher of the Year, and I was interested in that because I'm a little biased, but George Jenkins has the most fabulous trumpet player in the entire county, my grandson. A few days ago, the reason I'm here tonight, though, is a few days ago, a parent came up to me and said, "Mr. Nichol, I had to choose between paying my rent and making a car payment." I heard that from far too many teachers who tell me that there's far too much month at the end of the money, and that should not be the case for any employee for the Polk County School District, yet here we are. And every year, it's the same thing. The district says they have no money, yet magically, they seem to find some money, and here we are. So I'm just saying, let's just get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Next up, we have Brandon Santiago, and on deck is Samuel Talavera.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, school board members, thank you for having me. I'm a proud member, faculty member at Bartow High School, teach mathematics. Each day when I walk into the high school, I know that myself, as well as my coworkers, give everything they have to the students. We give our time, we give our hearts, we give our energy, and even our emotions to the students and to the profession. We're not just teachers, we're mentors, we're counselors, we're motivators, we're encouragers, and we're the steady foundations to support our students. Yet, despite all this, many of our teachers are struggling to afford the rise of cost of living to live in Polk County, even have a difficult time putting gas in their cars to travel back and forth for work. The reality, the reality is, we're losing, we're losing great educators to other, to other counties, other school districts, and even careers for more, for more pay and doing, and less stress. And at the end of the day, the people who are losing, who are affected the most is Teachers should not have to work second jobs, second and third jobs to make things meet. We should not have shoes between serving their students and providing our families. Tonight, I'm just simply asking you to, to come to the table tomorrow night with the 2, 2.5%, and let's make the deal done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Next up, we have Samuel Talavera.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me talk. I was a teacher for 12 years here at the district, Polk County School District, a science teacher, sixth or 12th grade. I just want to say that I consider myself a successful teacher, dedicated, and highly qualified teacher. I am a certified teacher, and I just, I love teaching. I love the, the students in, in Polk County, the diversity. I love it. I come from a diverse background and growing up in Miami, and I, I just wanted to come and tell my story real quick. A year ago, I, I was going through a lot in my, my private life, and my mother was in, was in cancer treatment. She, she recently passed away in November of last year. But as of April of last year, I, it was a situation where I, you know, I was going, I was going, going through a lot, and I was taking medication, and I had a side effect. And the side effect was that, you know, my, my dad was there at the time, and then he called the paramedics, and in his shock, the police came. And then my dad, he's from Nicaragua, so he doesn't like to see, and he doesn't like to see police officers, and he got, he was shocked, and he was, he didn't want to say anything to them. So they proceeded to take me without any questions because they, he, my father's a Christian, he believes in the Lord. He was praying, and he had a mark here, and they thought that I had hit my father, which I didn't, and they put me, they took me to jail. And, but ever since then, everything was cleared up. The, the charges were dropped, and the case was expunged. And I'm just here to, just to present my story that, you know, I love being a teacher, and I was a successful teacher for many years, 12 years, and, and I would just love the opportunity to go back, and I think I can contribute a lot to being a teacher, and I know all my administrators and all my teachers that know me, love me, and know my dedication. I just come, come before you humbly just to let you know if you can find it in your heart, because everything was like speculation, and it was a miscommunication, misunderstanding, and I would love to retake my, my career as a science teacher, and I know that's very much needed in this county. Like I said, I'm, I consider myself a successful teacher, and I know I've been highly qualified, and I love to teach, and I love, I love the kids here, so that's my story. I just wanted to present that to you humbly before you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We'll have Ms. Knave follow him out, get his details. We'll do a full review and then get in touch with him before the end of the week.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Talavera. That concludes our speakers who have signed up to speak this evening. Board members, next order of business is adjournment. There being no further business, this meeting of the Polk County School Board meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
I can't print to your printer from here.